All right, so I'm going to open tonight's city council workshop Wednesday, November 12th. And I think our first agenda item is Highway 36, Lake Elmo Avenue project update with Mr. Andrew Geeson from Washington County Highway Department.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Andrew Geeson. I'm a project manager for Washington County. And as you indicated, tonight, we will be presenting an update on the Highway 36 and Lake Elmo Avenue intersection improvement project. I did want to note that we do have a couple of members from the project team from MinDOT here, Dimitri and Matt. They're here, or they're also here tonight to help answer any questions. And we also have our county commissioner Bethany Cox and a couple other members from the county. So during our presentation, we will provide an overview of the project background in need, review the project's schedule, provide a quick overview of the engagement that occurred on the project, review the preferred alternative and project funding, and recap previous council updates. The main discussion item for today's workshop will be to discuss Keats Avenue, so we will spend some time talking about that area. We will also begin discussions related to allowable working hours and close with next steps. So as most folks know, this project is located at the intersection of Lake Elmo Avenue in Trunk Highway 36, located along the border of the city of Lake Elmo and the city of Grant. This intersection has an extensive crash history, about one crash seen here every two weeks. And since the opening of the new bridge that connects Minnesota to Wisconsin back in 2017, traffic volumes on 36 have continued to grow, leading to increased congestion and delays seen at this intersection. So touching briefly on the project's schedule, this project kicked off in 2021. The project team has completed the intersection study and environmental document phase. Final engineering and property acquisition is well underway. And construction of this project will last two full construction seasons kicking off in 2026 and is anticipated to wrap up in the fall of 2027. So moving on to the engagement portion of our effort, which included five formal engagement events. The first event was an elected official goal-setting meeting that brought together policymakers from the city of Lake Elmo, city of Grant, Washington County, and MinDOT. This meeting gave us a great understanding of our partner agency's goals and needs as we kicked off the project. Next, a formal purpose and need statement was drafted and shared with the public. Once we formally identified and gained community support of the project's purpose and need, we then started the alternative evaluation process. This was a detailed three-step multi-year process that considered all possible alternatives that could meet the project purpose and need. And through this three-step process, we held a series of public open houses to gather feedback on alternatives being considered. And based off a combination of input from the public, feedback from our project partners, and our technical analysis, a preferred alternative was determined. So this preferred alternative includes Highway 36 being raised over Lake Elmo Avenue and grade separated with bridge structures. This project includes a new frontage road to be constructed on the south side of 36, and there will be direct access to Highway 36 from the frontage road with ramps that include full lane deceleration and acceleration lanes. And I did want to take the opportunity to provide an update on the proposed full acquisition of River Valley Church, which this preferred design would require. Through state statutes, this church has certain protections that we need to meet. In working with our project partners and the county board, we have made a full final offer to the church, which the church has received positively. We are working for the final terms of a purchase agreement, so this sale is not finalized, but we are optimistic that a purchase agreement will be executed soon. So moving on to project funding, overall, the project is funded from a combination of state bonds, federal grants, and funding from MinDOT, Washington County, and the city of Lake Elmo. The city of Lake Elmo, through your CIP, has programmed $5 million for this project. The total costs of the project are estimated at roughly $50 million, which includes all in-cost for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. The majority of Lake Elmo's cost share of this project is from the new frontage road on the south side of 36, and the total cost of Lake Elmo's work is estimated to be roughly $12 million. After we apply the $3 million of MinDOT funding to cover the additional costs associated with the south frontage road extension and closure of Keats, and after we apply outside funding, we estimate the city's remaining cost share will be reduced from $12 million to somewhere between $4 and $4.25 million below the budgeted city amounts, which should be good news for the city. You will notice that based on the budgeted funding and estimated project costs, we are showing an existing funding gap of roughly $4 million, and Washington County and MinDOT are working hard to close that funding gap. So recapping past formal city council updates, when this project kicked off in 2021, we did have held that elected official goal-setting meeting. Once a preferred design was identified, we presented an update to city council in May of 2024 and requested and received a resolution of support of the preferred design. And at that time, the design did not include the south frontage road extension in Keats, or to Keats, or the closure of that intersection. So over the winter of 2024, 2025, the design was updated to include that extension of the south frontage road to Keats and the closure of the intersection. And then in February of this year, the project team updated city council with this design update and shared that this would be a city-owned roadway and MinDOT would cover the additional costs associated with this work. So jumping into access at Keats Avenue and starting with background for this area, so MinDOT did have a separate project programmed at Keats, and through our project engagement effort, we did hear from many folks from the community about safety concerns at this intersection. This led to the opportunity to streamline improvements to both intersections with one project. So the project team explored what it would mean to combine projects. We reviewed this from an environmental, financial, property impacts, traffic analysis, and constructibility front. And for our review, we did recommend that the two projects be combined to help streamline costs and construction impacts to the traveling public. And again, this was shared with the council in February of this year, once all the details were worked out. Therefore, the project team's recommendation is to continue to move forward with this design that includes the frontage road extension and closure of Keats Avenue. If the city council is concerned with the proposed work at Keats, an alternative option to consider is to revert back to the 2024 layout, which includes a cul-de-sac frontage road and would leave Keats Avenue as is. The additional MinDOT funding to cover the cost of this frontage road extension would go away, and we would anticipate that the city's cost share of the project would stay similar. So we do want to open this up for discussion with the council, as we are seeking feedback and direction from the council on this aspect of the project before we move on to the next topic. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Yeah, Councilmember Cragness.
So for the existing funding gap of $4 million, is there a contingency plan if this does not get funded?
Yep, Mayor, council member. Yeah, we are working to close that funding gap. We have a few alternatives that we're considering, so we anticipate that we will close that. But as it stands right now, we still have that existing funding gap.
Okay. And how, I mean, I don't know how much you can say on this, but how close are we to closing with the church on that sale?
Yeah, so as I indicated, we have made our full final offer. The church did receive that positively, and we're just working for the final details of the purchase agreement. So if the purchase agreement's not executed, but we're optimistic, likely within the next month, we will have that executed purchase agreement.
Got it, okay.
Church.
Well, thank you for putting this together, I appreciate it.
Mr. Geeson, would you mind going back to your slide, given the Keats intersection, All right, can you explain to us what the separate project program for Keats was?
Yeah, I know, well, MinDOT may be able to come up here and answer that better, but I know at one point, there was a separate project programmed at Keats. I think the scope was fairly vague. I don't think there was an identified scope, but, you know, options that probably were going to be considered was, do you close that center median? Do you look at closing the intersection fully and extending the south frontage road? Or do you look at adding acceleration and deceleration lanes at that intersection? So I think-
Does Mr. Tomasevich want to talk to us specifically?
Sure.
Sure, can just provide a quick update to your answer, Mayor. Thank you, council members. The separate project that was planned several years out was to look at an acceleration lane at Keats.
Were you closing the cross in the middle at that time?
At that time, we were not.
What did you have budgeted for that acceleration lane?
Mayor, I would have to go back and review our budget value for this, specifically for the acceleration lane. I'd have to check that value, but it's definitely under $1 million.
I think at the time when you guys were doing resurfacing, I had mentioned to your previous area manager that that could probably be included for about $500,000 at the time added to that, and I was told that was a no-go. So can you pull that sheet back up again? I don't know who's in charge of the screen right now.
Mayor, which slide would you?
Never mind, I'll pull it up on my own. So you presented this to us a couple of years ago, and then you came back in February and presented us with the full closure at Keats, at which time, at least myself and I think a couple other council members, received feedback from people that live well south of this intersection, fully not understanding the, and just to give you, Mr. Tomasevich, a little background on my history of this project, at the time that this was brought up, one of the preferred alternatives was a tight diamond, in which case that was city of Lake Elmo's preferred alternative, because certainly I don't believe that button hooks are a long-term solution to highway speed interaction conflict points when your speeds are hitting 70 miles an hour, even with acceleration, deceleration lanes. However, that was not acceptable to the city of Grant, and so the city of Lake Elmo, understanding that the seriousness of this intersection was needed to be addressed, we acquiesced that, and then we said okay to that. Button hook option, at which point, we had no idea that the state wanted to close down Keats, which makes sense, it's not a very good intersection. But nobody, at least in my knowledge, may be conferred with the city engineer about the closure of Keats and the access from eastbound, yeah, eastbound 36 to southbound Keats being closed. So when this was shown, I got several comments from residents, so I'm here expressing that disappointment that that can be in. Do you have any crash data that shows any instances from that southbound turn lane off of 36 to Keats having any crashes?
Mayor, not specific to the right turn lane. We have some general crash data at Keats, but not specific to just the right turn lane.
I would imagine that those are more related to backups from Lake Elmo Avenue in the evening when traffic backs up, or more specifically, probably in the winter when people aren't expecting it and hit the brakes. I haven't found any crash incidents from that right turn lane from 36 east to southbound Keats. Secondly, when the button hooks were involved, I did ask Mr. Geeson to do a traffic analysis at the button hooks to see what the traffic would act like, and I was told that 20 years out, what did you end up at? Traffic level C? We're talking A through F, level C, maybe a little worse on the north side, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
So what I asked was that we maintain a movement from 36 eastbound to southbound Keats, and I just made that aware to the other council members that haven't been in those meetings to avoid open meeting law violations, so that they're aware of what the request was. Request is still there, I don't understand why you would eliminate the frontage road while maintaining that, because it doesn't show any crash data. It's not any harm to that intersection, other than past experiences that the state has had and where they have eliminated that right turn lane. Different instances, not here specifically, where I have a lot of residents that use Keats southbound off of 36 to access their residents. And it goes much further, all the way down to 47th, where they access the neighborhoods, even in the Lake Jane area. Furthermore, that access would allow the continued, it would decrease the number of conflicts that would happen at the button hook for people that would have to double back to Keats to go southbound. So you're eliminating potential conflicts at an intersection that will increase with traffic as time goes on, whether it's people going eastbound or westbound or coming off 36 from the frontage road to 36. I think that's pretty clear. Another alternative, you've had two alternatives, I'd like to offer a third alternative. Third alternative being that you keep the right turn lane to southbound Keats, but have a performance measure in there. If it doesn't cause any problems, fine, you've solved it, you moved away. If it does cause problems and it is an issue, then we close it and move down to the button hook. If we're at a disagreement where we think one is better than the other, I think that if we have some performance measures in there to justify either it being left alone or being taken away, seems like a logical answer to me. And I would ask that MinDOT would contemplate that, or at least review that and see if that's something that's acceptable to them.
Mayor, I should certainly address a couple of your questions. One was specific to, at the time of the payment preservation project, I don't believe we had any funds programmed for Keats at that time, which is why it wasn't installed with the payment preservation. However, the concern that was raised at that time triggered the look at Keats and the opportunity for any improvements, and that's one of the reasons the acceleration funding was programmed as an independent project. Big picture, there's a couple of things, considerations. First of all, Highway 36 is a high-speed, over 50,000 ADT traffic roadway. Keats Avenue is about 1,200 ADT, those daily trips. And really, it's important to take a step back as to, through that extensive public outreach with the Lake Elmo project, we've heard a lot about additional concerns at Keats. And at the time, as I mentioned, there's only just the acceleration lane planned. So we really looked ahead and what is that long-term solution? Keats, at some point, it's already experiencing the volume on 36, that's giving it issues in functioning today. And the opportunity of the Lake Elmo project provided the opportunity for something more long-term improvement. Washington County is, so looking ahead, MinDOT looked under its cost participation policy for the opportunity to pay and provide funding for the extension. Under the cost participation policy, improvement is funded under this cost participation policy where MinDOT will participate in the local frontage road cost, including right-of-way costs when access to the trunk highway is being eliminated. The improvements provide safety and operational improvement benefit to the trunk highways. So that's directly out of the cost participation policy, meaning we can participate in local frontage road construction and pay for those improvements with the elimination of an access point. Also, the new interchange construction at Lake Elmo will provide that good, reasonable access. The reason there's direct access from Keats to 36 today is there's no alternate reasonable access. With the opportunity of 36 and Lake Elmo, there will be that reasonable and convenient access. Again, it's consistent with the highway design of this type of facility and speed, meaning when other interchange projects are in construction, we look at opportunities for direct access closure along Highway 36. Really, this is one of the first opportunities to be proactive, not wait until there's a major issue at Keats, but really look at that proactive opportunity to provide function to Keats Avenue with that frontage road construction under the cost participation policy in good faith, with no cost to the city, and with Washington County leading all of the design work and all of the right-of-way acquisition and all the wetland mitigation associated with that roadway. And then with regards to Keats today versus the frontage road, while it may appear that the existing right turn lane at Keats functions similarly to Lake Elmo, there's certainly several key differences. Perception of low crash frequency today doesn't reflect the future condition risk. Something important to note is that the traffic signal at Lake Elmo will be removed. Highway 36 traffic will be flowing, there will be no more stopping compared to the condition today. Vehicles traveling will be at higher speeds compared to the intersection today, and traffic volumes will only continue to increase. Drivers who avoid the stretch of 36 today during the light will come to this area and forecast that growth and increase in development pressure will continue. Keats Avenue lacks the geometry, storage space, and design controls necessary for a safe and consistent operation, particularly as speeds and volumes increase. No design, there's no design that will prevent direct access to Highway 36. And then the short intersection spacing between the two interchanges is, it's less than one mile outside of the typical interchange spacing, intersection spacing we would have. And I would also anticipate unintended consequences of highway traffic on residential roadways. There's also some snow and maintenance considerations with a one-way right turn lane. So the new interchange ramps and the frontage road, the geometry there at Lake Elmo is designed, as being shown today, it has the geometry, the signage, and the merge lengths are all designed to accommodate modern traffic and volumes and the speeds. They safely operate, operates, excuse me, they safely separates turning traffic from high-speed roadway, and it really just puts the local trips on the local frontage road and improves that emergency services access along the frontage road from Lake Elmo to Keats compared to today's condition. Really, as I mentioned, the closure aligns with MinDOT's cost participation policy. The funding for the frontage road, as I just read, is contingent upon the Keats closure, meaning MinDOT can participate in the local roadway, frontage road construction with that trunk highway benefit of the closure, which is directly out of the cost participation policy. It aligns with access management guidelines, particularly where Keats is today, and the new major investment at Lake Elmo, and really, safety first goal on the project. This is a chance to proactively prevent crashes rather than waiting for them to happen. Certainly strongly believe that the design reflects a responsible and forward-looking commitment to safety and system performance. Bottom line, MinDOT can participate in the local south frontage road construction under the cost participation policy because of the full closure access at Keats. This is opportunity to deliver a safer, more efficient corridor with a full state funding and no city cost participation. One of the biggest things we've heard also from the city is the amount of funds towards the project, and this is where MinDOT has come to the table and found an opportunity to fully fund that frontage road, including that right-of-way acquisition and final design. The closure at Keats, it's not just a design decision, it's a strategic investment in safety access and the future of Lake Elmo.
That's all well and good. I know that was a scripted comment. This is a MinDOT corridor. Washington County's doing the design, they're doing the heavy lifting. I see that time and time again where MinDOT's taking a backseat and letting the locals pick up the lift. You were saying, well, MinDOT's going to pay for the frontage road. Well, they should pay, it's their corridor, you don't want to talk about wetland mitigation. They should pay, it's their corridor. We all pay state taxes, we pay gas tax, we pay wheelage tax, all those things go into it. So all these things you're saying we're benefiting from should be done on MinDOT's Access is reasonable, consistent, and productive. Mr. Tomasevich, last time we met, you did say reasonable several times, and I mentioned you that to my constituents that live in that area is probably not reasonable. And you mentioned there's many people that go beyond their exit to double back. Well, many of those people haven't had to do that for umpteen years, and this is not a high turnover area of apartments. This is long-term living residences that use that road consistently. You mentioned that there's no design to prevent access to Highway 36. I'd like to think in my 30-plus years of experience, I've seen engineers do some amazing things with design to make sure that things don't happen a certain way, and I, for not one second, believe that it can't be designed so you don't have access onto 36. So the alternative is to cul-de-sac the frontage road, in which case, you're going to leave the access onto 36 from Keats. You can't put a acceleration lane on at that point, because you run into the deceleration lane for the button hook, so then you're just going to leave something that absolutely won't work and is not as safe, when the option of, and I have heard nothing yet, you say, improves emergency access, taking away an access to southbound directly? I don't know how that improves emergency access off of 36 to southbound Keats for those residents. That doesn't make sense to me. So I brought up a third option. What I heard you just say, without taking that back and maybe conversing with other people at MinDOT, is that that's not an option. I would suggest maybe that you do take that back to MinDOT, have a conversation before you say that's not an option.
Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate the feedback, and I will do that.
Thank you. That's all I have to say. Councilmember Dragicich.
I have a question, looking, so this intersection's constructed in the city of Lake Elmo, in the city of Grant, and the state highway, so why does Grant have no financial commitment to the project but Lake Elmo's $5 million in?
Yeah, Mayor, council member, so the majority of city of Lake Elmo's cost is for the new frontage road on the south side of 36. Since city of Grant does not own or maintain the frontage road on the north side today, and they don't have any costs, there's no, like, added elements along County Highway 17 that would trigger cost participation from our county cost policy, they don't have costs in the project. Bottom line is, they don't have infrastructure that they own and maintain in this area.
Is it a matter of population or the size of, is MinDOT owns that frontage road still on the north side of 36?
That comes into play, yeah, just with Grant being a smaller city with less resources, but the majority of it is just the new frontage road being added, that's where city costs are coming in for the city of Lake Elmo.
So what is the total cost of the frontage road?
$12 million.
Just the frontage road is $12 million?
Yeah, yeah, for that one, one and a half mile frontage road.
Anything further?
I mean, absent of having additional feedback from MinDOT based upon the mayor's insights, which I fully concur with, I don't know if I have additional feedback for you, Andrew, because I, unless we know what the final stance is, I fully agree. There's no discernible data to show there's a safety issue going eastbound to south. I see no reason for any tax dollars from a state, county, or city level to be used to eliminate something when the number one goal of this project is safety. I cannot explain to a constituent, to a resident, that that is rational, so I don't have additional feedback at this point, other than, number one, thank you for the work that you are doing, thank you for trying to find a way to ensure that safety is occurring at this intersection, and trying to make sure all property owners involved understand that situation so we can get this moving forward. But I, I think it is more than reasonable to have in place some type of an objective measurement tool to say, if safety crashes occur down the road, then fine, close it. But these are our residents who are being injured right now, so I, I find it hard- So I, I, I find it hard to be told, we need to close this for a safety reason when the safety issue is the one that we are fixing down the road. This is not where the safety issue is. We just had a person lose their leg a couple of weeks ago, so that's our first priority.
Do you have some other things you want to talk about, allowable working hours, things of that nature?
Yeah, so I'll move on. So allowable working hours, so moving on to the allowable working hours. So city code allows construction Monday through Friday, seven to seven, and then Saturdays from eight AM to six PM. So really to help ensure that this project gets completed by 2027 and does not continue into 2028, we are requesting an extension in allowable working hours for this project. So I do want to note that if council ultimately approves extending working, or extending allowable working hours, it does not mean crews will be in this era, area, say, every Sunday working on the project. By extending hours, it simply creates flexibility for extended hours or weekends as needed, really just to help ensure the project is completed on time. So you can see the hours on the screen there that we're requesting. We're looking for feedback on that. It's not an all-in. So if there's things that the council would want to see tweaked on that, we're open to that. But we are, we are requesting, I guess, that those extended allowable working hours.
Has your consultant done an analysis with a, like, a P-six schedule to say that those hours are needed to make sure and probably use some rain delays and things of that nature, weather-related, that Sundays are needed? That's kind of a atypical request, and Saturdays are pretty normal. Sundays are a little atypical in my experience.
Yeah, Mayor, we have done that analysis, and really, the first year of construction is a little tighter just with the project schedule that we have, when we're, when we are gonna acquire all the right-of-way and when we can get started, that first year construction season is, is tight. And really, how the staging is on this project is we need to get that eastbound bridge completed in the first year of construction. And so again, having maybe even some Sundays available during the year, during that first year would help. So that's kind of the baseline of how we came up with this request.
Has the county considered putting something in the proposal that allows X number of Sundays throughout the construction season as opposed to every Sunday in the construction season?
We would be open to that.
Because I think that would seem like it's, it's a little more complicated, but where you can even have the contractor rent Sundays for scheduled expediency or have ten total Sundays or eight Sundays during a given period. I know MinDOT's used lane rentals and things of that nature to help benefit traffic as it moves through areas of high congestion, which I'm assuming this will be during construction.
Yeah, we're definitely open to that. Some creativity on that contract language. So looking at next steps, so to close, we wanted to highlight some of our next steps. So I guess between the county and MinDOT, we'll follow up on the Keats Avenue discussion for that request for the eastbound right turn lane, keeping that open. So we'll come back to the, the city with that. You know, we will be seeking approval of a cost and maintenance agreement and come back for action on allowable working hours. So we'll work with city staff on that. We likely would come back in the December or January timeframe on both of the, both for the agreements and for the allowable working hours. And then we plan to advertise the construction bid package this spring, and then we will seek city concurrence of the bids received prior to a construction contract award. So it'll be another kind of touch point with the city once we receive bids on the project. We do plan on hosting a public open house in the spring to share kind of the construction staging and contacts and kind of what to expect during construction. And then again, construction is anticipated to begin next year.
So there's just some general, do you have a better idea of when the county's planning on putting this out for bid?
Yes, yes.
Instead of just next, over winter, spring?
So our current schedule, we're looking at advertising this project in March, opening bids in April, and then awarding a contract in May. That's all I had. I'm happy to stand for any final questions.
How would that work for the hours? Because this isn't a development agreement, it's not a CUP.
That's just, generally, the contract adminis, I'm assuming, well, actually, I know, but Washington County will be consulting out the contract administration, right? And so then it is up to the contract administrator to make sure that the contractors within the hours of operation for the contract.
But as in for us, it's a city code, and we're, we're not being asked to alter our city code for one project.
We would have to make an exception, which I would think in this area, given the limited amount of residential and the, I mean, the only thing that's really gonna be what I would consider a noise nuisance is when they're, I'm assuming this is a pile-driven supported bridge.
So this is a sheet pile bridge. We do a piling retaining wall on the north side of the project.
So that's, that's the primary driver of noise, right?
And I don't have an issue with the hour change, it's just the curiosity of, we're not, it's always been through a DA before without changing the city ordinance.
We can be creative and work a way around it if we need to, right? So this isn't, this isn't the first time this has been.
I believe in the city code, the city administrator has the authority to kind of, I guess, grandvariances to the allowable working hours.
You're correct there. It's just my ability to grant it can't exceed three days, so we'd have to.
So that's what we could alter, maybe?
Yeah, this would be a long term. Guess my only request would be to see if we could somehow maybe limit the Sunday amount just 'cause that is a, I don't know, it's a, we do have a fairly sizable church still in that location. I want to be cognizant of, of them and their, their services on Sundays. But I understand that, you know, sometimes if it rains on Thursday and Friday, it's nice to catch up Saturday and Sunday if you need to. But other than that, like the, yeah, a lot of hours. Contractor works that many hours, he's gonna burn his guys out, so. But, um, I don't, I don't see a major issue from my point of view, but welcome to hear from others.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it either. I think limiting the amount of Sundays as well would be, would be beneficial. I don't know that exact number, but I think limiting those Sundays as much as possible would be my opinion.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you much, Mr. Geeson, and thank you much, Mr. Tomasevich, for coming tonight and talking through those issues. Very much appreciate it, all your efforts and work thus far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is short-term rental discussion. Mr. Stolpa?
All right, good evening. We're here today to talk about short-term rentals in the workshop. Just a quick overview, we introduced short-term rentals through a text amendment earlier through Housekeeping, the Planning Commission, in January. So from time to time, let me take a step back. Currently, we have bed and breakfasts that are allowed, but they have to be owner-occupied. So we don't get too many requests, but we do get requests from time to time to people that wanna essentially apply for a bed and breakfast, but they don't want to live there. So that was brought up in January, and then there were some concerns by Planning Commission, so they asked to remove it, and they put it on their work plan. So we're looking at this at the end of the year to get direction from the council before we start, if we were to start on a text amendment to amend it. Just, so you know, the current status is that the city does allow bed and breakfast in the city. There are, I believe, six active permits at this time, licenses. They have to be owner-occupied. They're single-family homes. The lodging rooms cannot exceed five. There are certain parking requirements and insurance, and they're valid for two years. So the issue before the council is, should the zoning code be updated to allow short-term rentals? If you do believe so, then where should they be located in terms of zoning districts? Lot sizes, should there be a conditional use permit? Should there be a limit? Kind of very high-level conversation. And we brought up also, should they be regulated as an R-one or R-three occupancy? I'll talk about this more, just so you understand. This state fire code allows a short-term rental to operate in a home and not be altered. But the building code, the state building code, basically pushes all the short-term rentals into hotel classifications that require R-one occupancy. So we're gonna have to continue to do that research to see exactly what other cities are doing specifically. But we know Stillwater, for example, requires someone to convert from an R-three to an R-one. But we'll talk about that.
Meaning they have to sprinkler it in ADA yet?
It's ADA, it's not a sprinkler. So it's, it's a high cost for someone who wants to speculate maybe and say, you know, this could be a good idea. I want to try a short-term rental. The cost is pretty much prohibited to do that, is what we're looking at. So the Washington County requirements meet the definition of a hotel motel per state statute. So hotel motel means a building structure enclosure or any part thereof used as, maintained as, advertised as, or had to be placed where sleeping accommodations are furnished to the public and furnish, furnishing accommodations for periods less than a week. So essentially, a short-term rental, if you follow that statute, is a hotel, even if it's a house. So Washington County licenses short-term rentals, they have food, pools, lodging. They also license bed and breakfast. They perform inspections too on the license. Fire classification, this is just talking about, this is a quote from the website for the state fire marshal. So like I stated before, if you follow state fire code, it could be treated, a house could be treated under the short-term rental as a typical house. And where it changes is less than six guest rooms. So if it goes above six guest rooms, then it would be considered. I believe they're called lodging houses, and then that gets pushed to an R-one. So just real quick, R-three is your typical home. And then it's certain other uses, like group homes and those sorts of things, usually based on beds. When it's an R-three, and like we just talked about, it gets moved to an R-one. And then that's when you have to add all the ADA compliance, which becomes very costly. So what are neighboring cities doing? So Stillwater is changed, they adopted their short-term rentals in 2017, and they, they also provide licenses for hotels, Airbnb, I'm sorry, BNB's and other facilities. They require city council approval. They're good for three year, three years. They're both inspected by the fire and building inspector. So the short-term rentals are only permitted in specific districts, like the central business district. But there, you can also have, they have fifty licenses outside in residential districts. Their website states that there's only two currently available. But if you want to have a short-term rental and not owner-occupied, you do in Stillwater have to convert it from an R-three to an R-one. So some of the performance standards, and this is important to note because when you start to add performance standards, typically that would mean the city would have to license because you would want the ability to pull back the license if they're in violation. So we'll talk about approaches in the future, a little bit later. But they can't host private events with more than three unregistered guests. There's maintenance standards, there's parking requirements. And then the nuisance issue is the three-strikes-you-out policy, licenses may be suspended or revoked. And you can read here, it's the third substantiated and relevant complaint or violation within a twelve-month period. This is where it gets pretty tricky. I've done this in the past where, where I used to work. Outside of New Orleans, we had a lot of short-term rentals. So just trying to make sure that those are substantiated complaints and not someone just calling on their neighbor. So typically for us, it was making sure there was a noise complaint, and the officer went out and verified that it was too loud. Like, we don't work on the night, on nights and weekends, so it would be very difficult for our code enforcement to even track this. So occupancy regulations, R-three categories, they must be owner-occupied. And then also, if it goes over the five guest rooms, it has to be a five or fewer. It has to be in a single-family home. For Stillwater, R-one category, no permanent resident or greater than five. And then, you know, condos and mixed-use buildings, this is more popular now. I think in the last few years that you see short-term rentals in apartment buildings where some of the units are vacant and used for short-term rentals. Oak Park Heights also allows them, they call them transient lodging, but they're a conditional use permit. They're not necessarily required to be owner-occupied, but it must occur in a single-family home. And then they also have to comply with fire and building code. And then they also have excessive noise complaints and nuisances written into the code. Woodbury, on the other hand, is a city that has a bed and breakfast ordinance, but not a short-term rental. And Hugo is the same way. They're similar to us. We have bed and breakfast ordinance, but not a short-term rental ordinance. So this is a high-level discussion, just in terms of if this, this is something that the city would like to move forward with, if the city just wants to keep it the same. And if it is something you want to move forward with, just a little bit of information around where you think they should be located, should they be limited?
So currently, short-term rentals are prohibited?
They're prohibited, yep.
But we have, but we have some in the city?
I looked on Airbnb, and there's eleven.
Yeah.
Now, some of them may also have the bed and breakfast license. It's unclear.
Do we have a list of those that have the licenses for bed and breakfast?
We do, we do.
And are they owner-occupied?
I don't know. We don't check that. We don't, so we license it, they sign that it will be owner-occupied, and then they also are supposed to get a license from the county, so.
Okay. Have we ever cross-referenced those to make sure they have a license from the county?
We haven't done that yet either. This is all new. This was something that we pretty much discovered and started looking at, like, how, should we change the process?
What do you guys think?
I'm, I do not support that any change. I think we should avoid short-term rentals as much as we can. We're a quiet residential community. That's part of our character, and I don't see what we get from benefit from short-term rentals as a community, personally.
I'd be curious to know, as a data point, for the ones that do exist, what the level of compliance is.
We don't have any compliance to check against.
Well, but again, have they gotten what they need from the county? Are they indeed owner-occupied? So we have that from the proper tax records if they're claiming homestead. There are certain things that we can do with, with public records. I think that would help me to know, number one, with what we currently have, are the rules being obeyed? And then based upon that, then a different decision? I, I personally don't have an, an issue itself with short-term rentals within a, itself. But obviously, in terms of scale and scope, that's nothing. I don't want it everywhere. I would want it a specific limit, specific zoning. And there are twenty different ways to do it. Because the, what it does have the ability to do is it actually can cause home prices to go up because you're restricting the supply of available housing stock. That, that's one thing that's been shown, is it can cause that, and our housing prices are high to begin with. On the flip side, I think there's a reasonable argument that a property owner should be able to, in a reasonable manner, rent out their own home. But again, what, what's that reasonable manner? I don't have an issue with that bed and breakfast concept, I don't have an issue with it not being owner occupied, I don't. If I wanna do that to my home, I feel like I should have that right. Within a certain boundary, it's not a party house, there's not forty two guests there. There's there's obviously with noise regulations, with maintenance. But on the flip side, do I want the city then investing in time and labor to ensure those rules are being obeyed? That's a, that's then to me the harder question. I I guess the first thing I'd wanna know is for the ones that do exist. Based upon easy, low hanging. Accessible data, are they obeying the rules, would be my first thing.
I I think we've got a lot of them in zoning in Oakdale and Oak Park Heights and Stillwater and Woodbury, I have no problem with that.
So essentially, we have eleven short term rentals. Operating that are prohibited.
That's correct.
And so if they're prohibited. What do we do with those if the if we do not take on a. Sort of zoning code on short term rentals?
Well, they're different, we usually respond to complaints, we haven't received complaints, I've been here for almost two years, so.
So I I guess mine is that. I know that they exist, right? I know that there's one behind where I live. I personally don't have a problem with it unless it became a noise nuisance or there were large gatherings and parties, so. I guess my line of thinking is that. I'm also a person that says you should have. Opportunity to do with your property. As you see fit, as long as it's socially acceptable, right, we have things that regard around. Lawn height and, you know, taking care of your property, so it's not a nuisance to your neighbor and things of that nature, so I. Kinda like to have some guardrails on it. But I also think sometimes the government should just stay out of some of those things. But, you know, we have government so that society can be for everybody. If we are gonna allow it, then we should have some some guardrails that make sure neighbors and locals around there. Are protected.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think. Like mayor was saying, Councilman Holtz, that I feel like you should have the right to do. You know, what you want with your property, if you wanna rent it out, but. Like you were saying, mayor, there needs to be guardrails on it where it's not becoming a nuisance to the community either, so. I guess I I would need more information about this, I'm not set in stone on where I'm at right now, but. I think I'm not against it, so to speak, I think people should have the right to do with their property that they want.
Councilmember Holtz.
It's a question. I make audits for a living, like this is what I do.
You creating a hypothetical? Just just curious.
It's a hypothetical.
I just wonder where I'm where we're going with this.
If you were to go and say, look, this is now in violation. They are not a bed and breakfast, but they're acting like it, cause we just successfully rented out Airbnb. What is in code right now the consequence?
In terms of operating a short term rental?
What is the city, what powers does a city have currently in the ordinance to say you are doing this in violation?
It's the same thing as if you're not. Following the use chart for any other use, so if someone is operating a business in a single family, it would be processed like that. But this is considered a short term rental licensed by the county, this is not permitted in your land use, in your zoning district.
Do we send them a cease and desist then in that situation?
I think eventually, the challenge with that is, cause I've done this in the past, is it's hard to tell when they stop, you know, so it's hard to tell where they are because typically not listed. Their addresses, so you're like, do you send it to three people or, cause a lot of times they don't put exterior pictures. So then it's all interior pictures, so if we were just to go and look at the eleven, they didn't have exterior pictures, we'd be guessing kind of where they are. And then we would have to send the notice, the notice works sometimes, but then.
Just book it and cancel it.
What's that?
Book it, get the address and cancel.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's what I was just gonna say.
That's it, there's your workaround.
Well, honestly, in in many governments do that, you do the secret shopper. Like that's how you do the cigarette tax, that's how you do a couple of other things, you do secret shoppers, now whether. What, how does Stillwater do, like what do, what's their enforcement mechanism?
I don't know the details of it, but they're pretty strict in terms of issuing the permits and following.
Cause, I mean, what I don't want to be in a situation of is where we're then. Allocating a substantial amount of labor for something that, as of yet, we haven't received a complaint of. But obviously, there's a disconnect here, because we know things are are not aligning right now with what code requires. So we do have to make a decision, but I I don't want it to become something that's onerous for staff.
It it becomes a lot of work, honestly, when you start licensing and then you have people that aren't following the process, a lot of times you would have to take them to court. Airbnb is hard to work with too, I've worked with both platforms in the past, so. If you have a hotel motel tax, they have a division that's great to work with, they wanna get you the money, right? But the compliance side, it's a different group and they're very difficult to work with. So just trying to shut them off on the platform, especially a smaller city, it's hard to work with them to say like, we want you to disable accounts. And this was a couple of years ago, this is probably like four years ago. Just for context, we were dealing with short term rentals during COVID, so people would. Basically get party buses and use like houses as bars essentially, right, because all the bars were shut down in New Orleans. It was, so we've had a lot of. We we dealt with them and they're very difficult to deal with. In terms of the platforms, now if you're a larger city, they they do work with larger cities, right, cause they're really important, these large tourist cities are important to them, like. Here, it doesn't really matter to them, so they're they're, it's challenging to work with.
So how's this different than, this is a business, I have a I have a bed and breakfast, I have a business in my house. How's that different than, I can, a lot of other businesses come in, I'm gonna have a little bakery in my house, it won't be real big. Cause I got a small kitchen and not a lot of people come and go, where I'm going to have a. Widget shop, so opening up businesses in residential districts where people bought a home for residential use. We say, well, this business use is okay, cause it's a bed and breakfast, but you can't have a bakery shop in your house, you can't have this, you can't have that. How do we differentiate, business is a business, that's why you have residential zoning.
I guess I would, I would be devil's advocate on that, Councilmember Dragasich, I would say. Uh, if you're renting out rooms for lodging. Yes, it's a rental house for business, but it's not any really different than. Having a long term rental other than it's for two or three nights at a time, I'm not operating. Woodworking machinery for my widgets at whatever hours that I wanna run, or I'm not having. Customers come in and out to deliver baked goods or things of that nature, so I. Maybe it's a. A difference that's not that distinct, but I I think there's a little bit of a difference there.
I'm a chiropractic shopper in the office. People come from time to time, I only be part time, two hours a day, so it won't be a lot of traffic coming in and out.
But you yet you would have more coming in and out than say if you have a a short term rental.
If I if I if I have three rooms, three short term rental rooms and each room seats two people, I got six people coming and going. I just, I just rubs me the wrong way that we're allowed a business use in a residential district. I bought a residential home in a residential district for residential uses and activities. You're parking on the street, you have additional people coming and going, additional traffic coming up and down the street, you have additional garbage, you have additional noise. It's everything that's, it it's it's not, it's not the same anymore.
I don't know that you have additional garbage.
Well, though people don't generate any garbage.
Well, but not additional from what you normally have on a weekly basis. I've got, I guess, in my experience in staying at VBRAs and different places is they act in. As normal as other houses and they have rules there that say, you know. Don't be out, respect your neighbors, don't be outside, you know, there's general conditions in there, don't park in the street. Some of them say you need to park inside the garage. You know, that's why I'm saying, if you have it and there's some guardrails, I don't think it's unreasonable to do that.
Could the bed and breakfast be for dogs? I got a bed and breakfast, it's for dogs.
We have dog limits right now for residential anyway.
We have, we have bed and breakfast currently in our code.
In residential?
In residential.
Yeah, just, I'm not a supporter of it, I'm sorry.
All right.
One one thing to mention too, I believe the HOA could. Not allow them to.
Right, if your HOA rules don't don't allow that.
Right.
So that's something to consider. Anything specific about zoning districts or areas, because it's come up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it kinda comes down to that, you know, I don't know, I've seen. I've looked for places for skiing per se, right, and they'll hold sixteen people. Maybe a little crazy and maybe some of those houses that way, but that that's why I'm kinda talking about. What what is reasonable, is it? Six guests, is it? Eight guests, is it? You know, no loud noise beyond ten PM, is it?
So we're talking about short term rentals, not bed and breakfast.
Well, currently, bed and breakfast are allowed and by. I think they are considered not by definition, but by, not by code. But they're typically somebody that's gonna stay at bed and breakfast is not a long term rental, right?
Cause at the end of the day, I mean, help me to clarify. To me, a short term rental is literally a bed and breakfast without the owner occupied requirement.
That's it, yes, that's right.
That's that's literally what we're, so I. Number of lodging rooms does not exceed five. I mean, you can put another thing in there to say cannot exceed five and or maximum number of guests of. Eight, nine, I mean, if you have a family room, sometimes people might sleep two or three people in there, but, I mean.
I believe it's five and ten in the code, the state.
Like I I think those are both reasonable as it is, and I have no issue just simply eliminating the owner occupied aspect. We already have sound noise ordinances in our code for everyone.
Do we wanna, do you think that there's a, like Stillwater has a three strike rule, let's say the. Sheriff gets called there and they're known to have. You know, maybe the owner isn't being as attentive to their property as they should be. And parties are happening, the owner doesn't really care, he's making money on it because he's renting it out. Um, but the neighbors are all PO'd because the sheriff's been there three times in the last two months. And that's not fair to the the neighbors or the neighborhood. You could say substantiated complaints or notices. So then, does that fall under, I guess in Stillwater, they're under a CUP?
I believe they're under the license, so there's a licensing section aside from zoning. It's part of the license.
Then you get it, then you get back into your question on cost to staff. Which is ultimately a cost to the residents, right?
I mean, I guess that's where you start to discuss the maximum within the city, right? I mean, if we have eleven that are no one for bed and breakfast, let's presume that maybe there's twenty to twenty five total. Cause between Airbnb and VRBO, I mean, I I don't think. There's a need to have it be any higher than that, no one's asking for a hundred, no one's asking for fifty, I I just. I wanna make sure our our policies and procedures and our ordinances line up with what's occurring right now, which no one's complaining about, we're not getting complaints based upon. The bed and breakfasts that are occurring. And and we've had a thorough discussion about owner occupied, I. I don't have anything additional to to add.
You mentioned cap, what about zoning districts in terms of apartments? You know, this rural, the the divide between rural and low density residential and subdivisions.
I mean, the hard part with that is, cause there's also a market demand for different types of places. Like someone might want to have that type of a, an ability to rent out in. Fields of St. Croix, cause they know that people think that's gorgeous and beautiful and want to have that for a week's stay over Christmas. Meanwhile, the family is is out and they were like, hey, here's a way to generate revenue for our trip. I I think that'd be, when I beforehand, I was starting to think, God, we should just make this all anywhere south of Ten Street and in the Village. On the flip side, I don't. Maybe limit by quantity, by neighborhood, but I don't know if I would wanna say, because you live in this neighborhood. You are not allowed to do something with your property that others are, I don't think that's something that I would wanna go down.
I think that Director Stopa's comment is probably most HOA. Documents probably prohibit that from happening, I haven't looked at mine and since I moved in. Yeah, I would imagine your yours isn't.
So how how do you prevent, how do you prevent where you get these corporations to come in and buy up these and they're absentee owners?
That's a good question, that's a fair question, that's a fair question.
Now you got an owner who lives in Tuscaloosa, Alabama and owns five short term rentals in Lake Elmo. Now around to be found when there's a problem.
So is the problem that they are having bad guests? And they're not resolving the issue, or is the problem based upon the ownership type?
Well, historically, where they've come in and done this, there's been problems. There's a track record that's not good for absentee owners of short term rentals.
But we we currently have short term rentals that are abiding by the prohibited and we haven't had any complaints.
But they're bed and breakfast, they're owner occupied.
No, they're not. Go get on Airbnb or VRBO, you can find eleven places within Lake Elmo at different times.
I misunderstood, I thought there were eleven bed and breakfasts.
No.
Okay, well then we should shut them down.
They're violating our ordinance.
They are violating the ordinance, that's true. I don't know that that in and of itself is a reason to do that, even though I think that the question should be addressed. I feel it's maybe a little more, it's a little complex.
It's it's also complicated with the state and county regulations to. With the licensing, one thing to just put out there is, we don't get very many requests to do this, right? So if there's eleven that we know of on Airbnb and there's not that many requests, like you stated, the cap. That's something to consider, I I I see that as a way to safeguard against. Some uncertainty, because at this point, there doesn't seem to be much demand, but there could be. And I've been told anecdotally that a lot of people stay because the proximity of Stillwater is the attraction.
Sure.
So it's just something to consider, and if there isn't really a question of. Multi-family rural or single family, if no one really has an opinion, I, the plan is to take this to the planning commission. So so I just wanna get some information.
Man, there's a lot of questions around that.
My opinion, if we have an ordinance that we choose not to enforce, let's get rid of the ordinance. How do you, how do you have a book of order and say, well, we're gonna enforce A, but we're not gonna enforce C, and we might enforce D, but then we might not.
Well, that's that's why it's being brought up, council member.
Yes.
Is, cause it is noticed that it's not being addressed, so how do we, let's address it, one way, shape or form.
We got those guys that wear uniforms, you know, and we send them out.
Right, typically they go if there's a cost.
So educate me then, there's additional things with licensing done with the county when it becomes owners providing food and additional services? Is that one of the thresholds?
It's mostly bed and breakfast are much easier to permit, right? And then when you are not owner occupied, that's the challenge, so the challenge is. You know, basically converting it to the R one occupancy. I mean, typically you wouldn't be selling, you're serving food and a, if you're not there, short term rental, right, you know.
Right.
There are different classifications where health department gets involved and we're not talking about those, but I don't know enough about them, but I think they're called like lodging establishments and. There's, it's a different classification than a short term rental.
I guess my experience is, you know. When I've used a VRBO or Airbnb. It's been like, for lack of a better term, going to my own house, you know, a place to stay while in. It's been like, for lack of a better term, going to my own house, you know, a place to stay while I'm visiting somewhere. Um, comfortable and has some amenities as a kitchen that I wouldn't find otherwise in a hotel and. I gue- I guess that, you know, to me, I don't see any reason that they have to be sprinkled or anything like that. It, I mean, we're not requiring all houses to be sprinkled, just certain places that have, whether they're apartments or. Nursing homes or things of that nature, right?
That's correct.
So. I don't know, that doesn't give you a whole lot of direction there, but.
Well, it's good to ask because I, you know, I just don't know, it's on the, uh, planning commission's work plan.
Yeah.
So we can take it to them, kind of had the same conversation with them, let them know, cause if the council doesn't want them.
Yeah.
We need to know that, if you do want, you know, I have to know that also.
We have one council member that doesn't want them.
Yeah.
Alright, you know.
Wait till I get to Councilor Hearn.
Well, well, I think you might get a different answer on that one, but I, you, you can talk about that with Councilmember Hearn. I, I mean, I'm gonna have to tune into the planning commission meeting, cause there's a whole lot of questions I, I certainly don't know the answer to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And because our next discussion is about finance, I was gonna suggest that if these current ones that are operating, you know, and now paying. As appropriate permit fee, will you just send the finance director to collect it?
Sure. Uh, Finance Director Hadler.
I mean, I'd be afraid she came to my door.
Do you, do you need a, a chair for this discussion?
I might, it all depends on you guys.
Do you wear the appropriate shoes?
No, never. Always or never. Okay, none of those are mine. That's PDA. Nicole, where are the presentations living?
In the packet folder.
I always do VRBO for Gopher football trips.
Yeah.
Just give you the PDF. Nope, it's just the CIP. Oh, I'm looking in the wrong CIP thing, oh my goodness. For the love. Okay. I'm on it, promise. So, this is, um, our initial touch point on, um, our strategic financial plan. Um, we first talked about the strategic financial plan, um, back when we were doing the whole city strategic planning in, what was that, January or so? Um, and so this, the idea is to look at city finances holistically. And come up with, I'm gonna call it a plan, but it's really more of a, a, a guiding document, so we're gonna have scenarios and. We'll have some strategies, but it's not like a locked-in plan, so. I like to, um, sort of describe this process, um, and a lot of what we do in government finance as a puzzle. We've got a number of different issues that we deal with on a daily basis, so we've got, um. Expenses that might be in streets or administration or parks, and then we have different revenues like, um, taxes and, uh, fees. And we have debt and we have, um, infrastructure projects and other projects. And so this process is really meant to take all of those puzzle pieces and bring them together into our. Uh, an overall look of the, the city as a whole. So, tonight we really just want to touch on what those puzzle pieces are very briefly and how they fit into our process. Um, so the policies, our budgets, some of our assumptions. I did create some scenarios and run some really quick reports on, um, specifically the infrastructure, um, uh, fund. But, uh, we're not gonna look too closely at those just yet. So our, our existing city policies, um, and plans that will go into this include our capital improvement program. So we adopt that on an annual basis, it's a ten-year plan. The intent of the CIP is really to, to, you know, sort of roughly plan out what we think we're gonna need. Um, and the farther out it goes from the current year, sort of the, the looser it is. And then also to think about what the funding strategies are for those items. Um, we have our vehicle and equipment replacement policy, which is formalized for the public works department, but the, um, planning. And fire use something similar, and so we will be working with, um, them to sort of formalize that, that process. Um, our pavement management plan and street CIP, a portion of that kind of feeds into the overall capital improvement program. We have our annual budgets. We have our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six strategic plan, again, that we talked on about, um, earlier this year, so we'll be taking some of those concepts. And creating annual budget items from those, so just sort of one thing that feeds into another. And then we have other policies, like our fund balance policy, that will kind of dictate how much, um, money we wanna have in any particular fund. We have some other, a number of other financial related policies that might not, they affect how we work, but maybe not necessarily how, um, this plan is drafted. Another, uh, some more of our assumptions revolve around staffing and service levels and our organizational capacity. As you guys are well aware, the city has been growing, um, very quickly in the last decade, and so we've. Been addressing staffing issues, um, for a number of years. Um, our compensation plan is, is a, a policy that we had, have adopted that sort of guides how, um, we pay our employees. We also have union contact, contracts. Um, we recently did a public work staffing study, um, so we will be referring to that. And then, um, our, uh, most recent admin and finance staffing study was done in twenty twenty-two, and we've essentially, um, fully implemented that. We will also be taking, um, department head input and projections, um, to sort of, you know, look out beyond, um. What any of these, uh, studies are looking at. Other assumptions revolve around, um, major city projects and capital scenario, so these are things that are sort of in discussion or in the works. That we think might occur in the next twenty-five years. And the idea is, again, not to necessarily plan for these things, but plan for the possibility of these things and the impact that that would have on our finances. Development rev- and revenue projections, um, so we went through this process of revising our development projections last year. As we were taking over the, um, uh, the update of the water and sewer or the utility study. Um, so we will be revising that on a regular basis, that plan, um, or that, uh. Spreadsheet projects out water and sewer revenues, park dedication funds, we're gonna try and, um, project out permit revenues, tax capacity growth, et cetera. Um, other assumptions are, are we use our, our debt and financial, uh. Sustain, okay, so we'll, we'll be looking at debt and sus- uh, financial sustainability. We've had a lot of discussion about decreasing our debt moving forward, we're sitting at about sixty million dollars, um, right now. Um, and then just talking about sustainability, when I'm talking about sustainability, it's not for the next ten years. I want the city to be sustainable twenty-five years, fifty years from now. And a really large portion of that is gonna be making sure that we plan ahead for those financial investments that are needed, um, especially for our infrastructure. And again, the strategic financial plan is really a decision support tool. We will be able to, hopefully, um, be able to take a look at any, um, discussion that you guys are having. And plug it in and kind of see where that might take us in years, uh, down the road. So I had sent out an email about, um, some of the scenarios, and I discussed it a little bit in my memo, but, um. We're working in Excel for this right now, um, and just given the number of different factors that affect our work and our finances. We're gonna be able to do a limited number of scenarios, there's no way to do an infinite number, so we're just gonna have to kind of pick and choose. Where, uh, sort of what we wanna look at and do some comparisons. So, I, I listed a few here, so that we'll look at the street CIP, so maybe we adjust some of our funding, um, policies or our averages. And our, um, street project expenses within our operating budgets, we'll be able to incorporate some department head projections. Or maybe if we, um, wanna look at changing a service level for something, we could do that. Um, development obviously is gonna depend, um, a lot on the market, um, the housing market and demand. Um, so we can model some baseline growth and then maybe, you know, what happens if there's some market stagnation? And then, of course, our large capital projects, so, you know, what happens if we. I, I never know what to call this project, the seventy-seven acres, this ball field or sports complex or the big park. So, you know, taking a look at that, what that does, both from a debt perspective and then future replacement and operations. So again, I, I included some projection scenarios just to kind of give you a taste of what this might, um, what, what this will sort of look like. And, and when we're, um, trying to, to sort of plan out some of these scenarios. So this is my current, and again, this is more, most specifically for the four oh nine, um, the infrastructure reserve, uh, fund. So I took engineering's, um, CIP and played around with some various funding. Um, so the percentages that you see there, um, I'm gonna highlight those. Two, the first two orange columns, um, are the percentage of cash on any of those projects in those years. So I sort of arbitrarily said, let's, let's shoot for this maximum of thirty-five percent of cash. You might recall that I talked about, you know, our current dollars, uh. Past dollars, current dollars and future dollars, and so that's where that, that thirty-five percent came from. So building up to that thirty-five percent for residential construction projects, setting a set transportation project cash amount at thirty percent. And then we should be able to do, um, we believe, uh, sewer, uh, water sewer and storm all with cash. So those are at a hundred percent. I then took the, you'll see that kind of over to the right, I assumed for this particular scenario that we were starting. The four oh nine levy at two hundred and fifty thousand and we were increasing it by ten percent per year. And then below made some assumptions about like, we, we wanna get that up to two million dollars at some point. And then we, while we have a ten-year CIP for this particular process, we want to make some assumptions about what those longer-term projects are. Cause we wanna, you know, really project out, so. Um, based on sort of some review of the numbers, our current averages and some discussion with engineering. I am, uh, estimating, you know, roughly one point five million for residential and then eight and nine hundred thousand. For the city and county transportation projects respectively. If we wanted more detailed numbers, more exact numbers on those, we would need to invest a significant amount of money to figure out what, what that is, and we can talk more about that later. So that's my, my scenario one, so I, I created scenario one, two and three just for, for this particular exercise. So, in scenario two, I, you know, revised some of the transportation funding, I upped the four oh nine levy, the. Levy growth over the years and then changed some numbers at the bottom. And the idea of all of this is really just to examine what happens to our fund balances and our debt over time. Sorry, this is the extension of, so this is how it all kind of plays into the street CIP. So you guys see Jack's color-coded, uh, CIP each year, so this is just a portion of that. Um, to try and, uh, to make the calculations work through the spreadsheet. Um, that then processes through a cash flow and funding analysis statement, and in the end, we get pretty charts that show us what is gonna happen with. Our, or what could possibly happen with our, um, uh, this one is the CIP totals.
Just a question.
Yep.
Just so I understand, see residential, street improvements, transportation improvements, county, city cost share. And then, so what's the difference between transportation improvement, city, what's, what's boiled into that?
Is that like collector streets?
Is that, is that like fiftieth? Talking about like fiftieth and twentieth and Keats and, okay, alright.
Um, here's one of the charts that I have currently for our principal balance projections. And then in the end, we'll be able to do some comparisons, so this particular chart is examining or is comparing, um, scenarios one, two and three. So we can kind of, you know, again, just compare what happens. So again, just an intro to how this works, this is, again, only for four, fund four oh nine. The larger strategic financial plan, we'll look at all funds, operating, capital, et cetera. It's, uh, uh, there's gonna be charts galore. I mentioned in the, um, in my memo, we have a couple opportunities sort of in, to improve this process. I wanted to just mention on, see if anybody, i- if there was any interest or concern. Um, we are currently building this model in Excel, um, we've had some experience with, um, Northland's model. Councilmember Dragovich has, has shared some of his modeling with us, I'm very confident in my ability and Nina's ability to build these models in Excel. My concern is really more for any type of staff turnover, anytime we're handing off an Excel spreadsheet process. Especially with something with this complicated to somebody new, there's a lot that gets lost in that, um, definitely, uh, it's an efficiency problem. So there is a, um, we found one solution, um, that is promising, I still would have to review it more, it's called Yuna. It also has a reporting tool that's kind of cool, um, where it would be visible on a, on a website. It is a high, it's, it's a large investment, it's ten thousand dollars per year.
Is this, so you're talking the difference, you know, what we have currently and this, this, we just purchased new financial software, right?
Right, so the financial software really is for our, for our actual like accounting of things, this is a planning tool. And so, unfortunately, BSNA has, they have multi-year, um, budgeting, but it's not the same as trying to do a long-term plan. And there's no scenario planning available in BSNA at all.
Yeah, just the layman in me didn't understand the difference there, thank you.
Absolutely, um, another investment we could make if we wanted, um, better data, again, is the streets inventory, so we received a quote from. Um, Bolton and Mink to do a streets inventory for eighteen thousand dollars, that that would give us a much better idea about those long-term investments. Beyond that ten-year plan. I believe that we will be coming to that data here in the next few years anyways, just through our, you know, the GIS processes. I guess, I, I could go either way, council had expressed some interest in, in more fine-tuning these numbers, so I wanted to present it as an option. Um, and we could always do it down the road also, um, you know, we're very early in this process and it is gonna be an iterative process year after year. Um, okay, so just looking at some priorities and objectives of this plan. Um, debt management, uh, is, I would say, one of the, the larger, um, issues at hand. And then just overall long-term fiscal health. Levy strategy and revenue stability, we don't like it when the levy jumps up and down. We know that in a growing community, it's gonna increase, we would like it to increase at a very, very reasonable rate. Um, capital planning and infrastructure investment, um, it's extremely important in the short term. I think for this community, it's gonna be very, very, very important also to think very long-term. Uh, because everything was kind of built and rebuilt all at the same time, we're gonna, the community's kind of gonna see the same thing in twenty-five years. We don't want them to have to then come up with, again, we don't want them to be in the same position we are, uh, with high levels of debt, right? If we can avoid it. Um, budget sustainability and service level, levels, we want to, you know, I want to see what happens, um, to our budgets and our, our tax rates. Um, if there is a market stagnation, we don't get the. if there is a market stagnation, we don't get the development that we are used to. You know, what does that do? What kind of decisions need to be made? And then just updates in strategic alignment. How do we, how are we using this plan in the future? And how do we keep it updated and make it valid? So my questions for you this evening are, are there any concerns with or changes needed to those foundational assumptions? So are we planning for our vehicles and equipment based on our current schedule? Or is that something that council wants us to review that schedule before we put all this work into this, this plan? There's sort of a domino effect that takes place in this modeling if we start making changes to the CIP. It gets really tricky to, to shift things around. So existing cities, policies and plans, staffing, service levels and organizational capacity. All these things that I touched on, now is the time that if we're going to not use our current, sort of what's on the books for us right now, that we've been talking about for the last couple of years and adopting and whatnot. If there's something that is sort of not meshing, for whatever reason, we probably should have that discussion, again, before we put all this work into the, the modeling. Future major city projects and capital scenarios. If there's anything else that council would like us to, to look at, we're happy to. And then, yeah, development and, and debt. So are there concerns, changes that we think we need to make before moving forward? That's a question.
I have no new information. Absent of any, hearing anything that is an issue with what we're doing currently or how it's planned out. No reason to change course. If somebody else has some reason why we should, then I'm all ears.
I don't think that really, you know, the development and revenue projections in long-term financial planning is a fairly complex subject, as you know. And there's a lot of ways to, to approach it. On the development side, generally, you're looking at, you know, how's our operating costs and revenues affected by new development, both in terms of the real estate and the number of population growth and employee growth in the city. And they drive your operating costs from different perspectives. And, you know, then of course, we have the fiscal disparities to deal with in our commercial tax base, where we making those contributions and we get some back. And so it's, it's very complicated, very complicated process. There's, frankly, there's just not enough detail to determine whether we need to make any changes or not. I'm sure you're still in the process of developing it. But there, it's an interesting topic, let me just say that. And a lot of, a lot of variables that can be played out. And, you know, how does that growth and development affect your capital needs? You know, equipment, fire stations, public buildings, parks and wrecks. And, you know, they are inextricably intertwined, as the attorneys would say. And so one drives the other in a way that both incurs capital costs and operating costs.
Okay. Hearing nothing more. We'll move on to council priorities and objectives. Are there any other financial priorities or objectives that the council would like to consider that I haven't listed in here? Obviously, we'll, I've, I've got a whole list in my office. But I've wanted to hear from you guys if there was anything in particular that you've thought of as you are reading this, that you've been concerned about as we're talking about strategies moving forward.
Nothing came to mind beyond what we've discussed previously in strategic sessions and what council has looked at as priorities. You know, as you know, not everybody will be here forever. So those priorities and strategic initiatives may change in the future. But as far as, you know, what we've discussed and what has been thought up to date, I think that's kind of where everybody's agreed to go.
I think one thing to consider, be, thanks for basically saying we're going to die at some point, but.
No, I mean, you know.
I think he was thinking losing elections.
Yeah, right, exactly. You know, you could move, I don't know.
Powerballs tonight.
Could happen.
I, I think one thing to consider, because, I mean, when the mayor and myself and a previous council member joined, you know, we were told at a very high level, well, this is what the, you know, staff has, you know, one staff member has decided is, is our fiscal plan. But we didn't really have the plan. And the amount of work that you've done, you and Nina and others have done over the last year, two years to compile this, I, I don't know what, what you have then for moving forward. We'll all be gone at some point. But to make sure that there is something, an easy to consume educational feature for all incoming council members to say, look, this is where we're at. This is kind of the 20-year, 30-year picture. Here's the reasons why certain decisions were made and here's how this affects this. Because usually when, when, Elise, I didn't run for council to be like, I, you know, this topic, we ran on, for various reasons for, but not necessarily to discuss the ins and outs of this exact topic. It wasn't my subject matter expertise. I'm not Nick in any way, shape or form.
That's obvious.
Thank you.
I have way more here. So I, I think whatever you can do as kind of an easy guide or easy resource to help on the, the incoming council members. And even, I don't know if it'd be something good for the commission members as well. I mean, potentially, because the CIP drastically affects things. So on the park commission, yes. Maybe with the, the planning commission, potentially for the, the EDA. But something that's digestible and can be easily communicated would be definitely a help. Because that saves time for you and staff when maybe there's conversations where you're like, I thought we already were aware of what happened the last year, the last two years and how we came to the current place we are today. So then at least conversations where there is disagreement could be a bit more informed.
I like that. Anybody else? And then I, you know, what questions, it's kind of the same, same thing, sort of redundant. Okay, scenario planning and report planning. Again, I just wanted to give the opportunity to, you know, if there was anything that you folks would like us to look at specifically or if there are any sort of particular lenses as we're doing scenarios. So I, I will be doing some comparisons. And so I think I listed some, you know, there's a, debt per capita is an easy one. So our debt per capita is going to decrease drastically as we grow and can decrease our debt, you know, at the same time. Or, you know, we'll take a look at some, you know, market factors. We'll use population for a number of things. I forget what, what all they listed in there. But are there any other lenses? Also, number Drogic, you've done this a number of times. Are there lenses that you would like us to look at as we move forward?
Not for me.
All right. Final question for the, there was some discussion at the last meeting about what at that 26 infrastructure levy will be. This is essentially sort of the starting point unless we decide to change course. Obviously, we can make that decision at a later time. But this will essentially be my starting point for that infrastructure fund moving forward. So do we want to change that at all before I present the levy to be adopted in December?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Change for me either.
Not for me.
I voted against it, so I guess I'll just be, sit in the corner and say nothing.
Okay, well, that was it. I'm happy to take any feedback as we go. But I did, you know, again, these are very complicated models and we didn't want to put, invest a lot of time and then have to make changes later on, so.
Notice there wasn't a real big difference between scenarios two and scenarios three as that goes out.
That is largely because of the, I believe it was the change in my estimated costs, sort of. The, the costs increased as much as the levy did. I think it is what it was.
I mean, it starts out almost negligible and then within 10 years it hits like $500,000 difference. Good.
In terms of the, the financial long-term planning tools and with Excel versus that software package, are, are there ways you see to help prevent that risk of the staff turnover with Excel being used? I mean, I.
Oh, you mean just within, and I'm, I'm definitely trying to. Because if I make it, these are, I make it on myself, the easier it will be for somebody else. And so like building in that flexibility and making things really obvious, you know, I, I put things in red, like, you know, do this, or I make a note or, you know, whatever. So because it's, it's me right now building it. But at some point, Nina's going to be updating it. And so it's definitely has to have, have some interchangeability right off the bat. So absolutely, yes.
I would only opine that when you build it carefully, it, it becomes a process in and of itself that then someone can pick up and follow. We did a, go back, I don't know, 15 years. We did a long-range financial planning model in Excel for the League of Minnesota Cities that the league sold to all its members. And so it had to be something that a city could buy and pick up and determine how to, how to put all the data they needed into it so they could use it as a planning tool. And there was, you know, a manual that went with it, a couple of pages. But it's, as you put it together, you put together a process that makes sense and allows logic to follow and flow through it.
Yeah, because I mean, what you're building is essentially a program itself. It's an out-of-the-box, I mean, because I assume there'd be certain presumptions that are in there that have to be adjustable. But if at some point when you win Powerball and it's not you or Nina, they then are getting, need to know on page 20, hey, this presumption here, this is how, this is what's taken into account if it needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, and to some degree, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Last item on tonight's agenda is CIP future project discussion.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I've just added this as another opportunity for discussion prior to adoption of the CIP in December. There has been some prior council discussions about adjusting the, the next five years of our CIP, specific street projects. But there hasn't been a specific direction given to staff if we are supposed to be making that. So I wanted to put this on here.
I think some of that discussion, if I recall, related to some of the projects that were maybe a little further out in, in timeframe. And at that point, I believe Jack made some adjustments with removal on projects that would be developer-driven that showed up in the CIP and maybe gave a little bit of a higher number that, you know, we don't know if it's really going to be there. So I feel, at least for me, it's more, it's more realistic at where it's at now from where it was at the first, first blush. That, that's what I recall. If I'm wrong, please let me know.
Councilor Hearn had a concern about just the overall magnitude of it.
Right. And, and I think, you know, when we talked about that, the, the CIP's run, right? You're really looking, the first three years have a fairly solid stature, right? Where owner entities, well, next year's pretty set. Year two's almost as much set. Three-year, you have some flexibility if you have a, an emergency or something pops up. But once you get out in that five-year beyond, it's kind of a best guess, at least in my opinion. And things can change and markets can change. Costs of those things, as we saw during COVID, right? They can just rapidly expand. So it's really trying to give the best guess that we got. And I don't know, Jack, are you going to expound upon that?
Yeah, I, I think I can just maybe add a little more specificity to what you're, what you're saying. In your particular CIP as it stands right now, the city has been playing catch-up. Because you had, the councils previously have been playing this slow drag, kind of skip a year once in a while and things like that. And so we got into this catch-up mode. We were quite a ways behind. The, the state grants helped significantly, helped us catch up. Your current CIP is a 10-year CIP. The first five years, maybe six years are already neighborhoods that need reconstruction as they stand today. The recommendation today would be, so not five years from now, but today. So they're still part of that catch-up. When I started, when I was challenged a year ago to go to a 10-year CIP, it does start to get a little harder to figure out what streets are going to be next. And we started to, that, that second set of five years really was looking at the age of payments. And you're trying to now guess that deterioration curve and which neighborhoods are going to get there. And so, you know, five years from now, definitely those roads are going to be in worse condition. But are they going to be ready for reconstruction or not? We don't know. It, so it was very much just based, it was more speculative and very much based on the age of the road.
But I also understand with my experience that the more data that we get using the current pavement management plan and icon data, the historical data that we have, those depreciation curves will be more accurate.
Yep.
And actually give the city a better leg to stand on and understanding, you know, beyond that five years and really give a better look at where that road's going to be in 10 years, 15 years, given certain maintenance opportunities and things that can be done. So, I mean, in that realm, the consistent activity of, of checking the oil, so to speak, in your engine will, will help that prolong for the city and give a better viewpoint of what those expected expenditures will be.
Correct.
Right.
I think in my, in listening to Councilor Hearn was saying, in some conversations I had with him, you know, we're looking, we look at our levy, we have almost $4 million in debt service, a great portion of which is related to streets. We have $4 million year in street construction. That's $8 million for streets. We have $600,000 for maintenance. We have close, somewhere between eight and nine million we spend every year on streets, one way or the other. And we have $6 million we spend to operate the entire rest of the city for operating people personally. So, you know, it, it seems like there's this imbalance there somewhere.
There is an imbalance. And part of that imbalance is what Jack indicated was in the previous, as of the year 20 years, it was, hey, let's figure out the budget. We've got $500,000 left. What road are we going to take care of? Which is not any way to manage an infrastructure in, in my, my line of speaking.
Yeah, I think, and I think Councilor Hearn was saying, can we slow it down a little to bring a little less financial pressure? That's, that was my understanding of what he was talking about.
Understood.
And also my, my two cents were just that, again, as the mayor mentioned, when we are doing the, the projections, that if it is developer paid for, that we're obviously not considering that in any of the, the CIP costs. But also, I would be fine with even all costs for a priority five never be tallied as well. Would be my two cents. Because to me, if it's a number five, it's not even something that we've, it's literally not under actual consideration. It's, it's a high-level placeholder, but that was just my two cents.
That's a, that's a good point.
And we're, we're moving to, we sort of, our reaction was to move to two sets of books. So I'm not removing them from one set of books because we got to keep our eyes on those projects and things like that. But then when we are now doing more different analysis with those numbers, we will select to remove some of those numbers.
Absolutely. Yeah, not, not to delete, but yes, still track.
Is that the discussion you were looking for, Administrator Miller?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. All right, so, I'll darn it. Is the font really getting that small or is it just me?
It's you.
Yes, Councilmember.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so, next week, regular agenda items, we have, oh boy, acronyms. We get the ULI Urban Lanes to Tap presentation on the 180 acres, which hoping people take a look at and look at that, and then we have, hopefully we get some more information on approving municipal consent for Highway 36, Lake Elmo Avenue improvements. That might be something that needs to be kicked back into December potentially. Please remind me what the RLS number 132 is.
That's the registered land survey that we continued from the last time, or we removed it from the...
Oh, we, oh, got it, got it, right. So, right. Some Highway 36 stuff, there's things on the consent agenda. I urge you, if you're interested, to look at the Lake Elmo website, future agenda items, probably on Thursday, that information will be out there for those that are interested. With that, we'll adjourn this evening's meeting at 8:22.